Bring the meeting to order here and approval of the summary minutes of the November 19, 2013 regular meeting. We'll need a motion to approve or any discussion.
I make the motion to approve the November 19, 2013 regular meeting minutes.
Second what he said.
We've got a first, first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none will take roll. We're all in favor in the cap by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passed.
You can.
Public hearing item, application CU-13-3 filed by George Stein, request approval of conditional use permit to allow construction of a mini storage structure in a C3 shopping center zoning district. We'll hear from city staff, Dean Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will allow John to get the screen fired up for you, but we are looking at a vacant parcel, last remaining vacant parcel on the east side of Clark Street, south of South Street. And if you go back to the zoning pattern there, John, maybe blow it up a little. The historical zoning pattern here is that the predominant zoning in the areas, I think you can see, is C5. And that is only different right here. And at one time, this entire row of lots over on the east side of Clark was all zoned C3. And these lots have been rezoned from C3 to C5 at the initiative of the owner, the Jarvis's that owned this lot, also owned this lot here. And the property was the site of Toxial Pest Control, which fit better in a C5 district, so that was rezoned to C5. And then Max McClintock built an RV storage building on this lot, right here, which was a single storage building, and that was determined to need C5 zoning. So the C3 zoning was primarily because, at the time of adoption, the C3 district allowed for mixing in residential housing and the C5 district didn't. So the C3 designation is more about the residential use than it is about the commercial uses in this area. So our understanding that this property is owned by the Jarvis Trust, that George Stein, through SCR Inc., is a contract purchaser of the property. It contains a little over 12,250 square feet. If you've driven the area, you know it's primarily service-related businesses and buildings with very low traffic volume. There's contractors' offices, mini storage complex, storage buildings, and you have the National Guard armory down at the south end. And then on the east side of Clark, there are some multifamily and single-family dwellings that were approved through a conditional use permit. And so the applicant views this as a desirable location for additional mini storage facilities. He is the owner and developer of the mini storage facility across the street, which you approved in 2011. And then we had Big Toy Storage, which is approved by the Planning Commission in 2005 through a similar conditional use permit process. The plan that's been submitted for your review shows a 96-foot-long-by-48-foot-deep metal storage building. It would either have six to seven bays for enclosed RV storage that would face Clark Street. It's our understanding as a staff that there would be no onsite office and no outdoor storage of vehicles, boats, et cetera, proposed, and also no fence or gates around the perimeter, but we'll let the applicant clarify that. So we are talking about a multi-bay mini storage-type facility that is a conditional use in C3, which means it is to be reviewed by you on a case-by-case, location-by-location basis. And so your first role today is to determine whether the proposed use of the property, RV mini storage, would be compatible with the character of the surrounding neighborhood, and then to look specifically at the applicant's plan to see if it complies with C3 development standards and takes into account what is around the property. We've summarized for you the C3 standards and what has been proposed. And primarily, the thing that we identified is traditionally, in a C3 district, if you abut a residential district, then you need to put up some form of screening fence. And we referred you in the staff report, if you look at the New Dillon store that is located on East Cloud, the rear of that abuts residential districts, and so they have a six-foot screening fence all along the backside of their property, as they did over at their former location when they backed up to Lewis. There's an exception for that, though, and that is when the property that's used for non-residential purposes is 100 feet or more from an abutting residential lot line. In this case, there's 100 feet from the property line to the property line of the residential properties on Montrose. And so it's our interpretation that no screening fence would be required. And we would justify that further by the fact that the C3 district, as opposed to C5, does not allow for any outdoor storage. The other thing that we determined is that there would be a requirement, based on the frontage, to provide 1,220 square feet of front yard landscaping. The plan submitted by the applicant's architect provides about 916 square feet. We also determined that because there's residential housing abutting to the south, a minimum 15-foot buffer would need to be provided along that south side. And the site plan submitted shows a 13-foot buffer here. What we would need to discuss today, I think we determined that the plan is, this proposed green space here is actually in the public right-of-way, and that would only, or should only be used or considered as a last resort. This space here is 25 feet north to south. So if you came in 12 feet here and created a grassy island area there, that would cause that to comply and have the 1,220 square feet. There also might be a possibility of gaining some more in these corners. Obviously, this is done partially because you're dealing with RVs, and you need a certain amount of space there to line that up. By our measurements, this point right here is 50 feet from the property line. And so if you brought additional landscaping in here, 10 to 12 feet, then you'd be reducing that area here in terms of maneuverability. But the primary areas that we found this plan not to comply completely would be in the area of the buffer on the south and the amount of landscaping in the front. As far as existing utilities and how this fits with the surrounding area, this area has become kind of a hub or mecca for RV storage-type facilities, so this facility would fit right in with the surrounding uses. Since there's no onsite office, basically, they would need a place for somebody who might be bringing a vehicle there to swap out, just to have room to park, but there wouldn't be any reason or need for dedicated off-street parking. Which then brings us to the comprehensive plan, which shows this as part of a community center along the Broadway corridor or radiating out from the Broadway-Crawford intersection. And the, it says that transition buffers should have less intense adjacent uses, minimize the impacts of noise, light, traffic, operations, and intensity of the center. Acceptable buffering could include fencing, solid plantings, berming, or other methods that complement the development character. We also noted that, under this plan, the 70% of this front yard would be paving and only 30% green space, and in C3, that ratio is supposed to be 60/40. It just so happens if they increased the green space here, they would make it a 60/40 ratio. So we have outlined for you on page six, staff findings that we think support approval of this use and this application. And your alternatives would be to agree with those findings and approve the application in this location, approve the application subject to conditions or revisions being made to the plan, postpone consideration of the application if you think you need additional information about the project to make a decision, or you could deny the application if you think the proposed use would be incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood. What we've suggested is, on page eight, that we believe that the plan is in shape for you to approve with the revisions that we've outlined in one, for revisions to the landscape plan, clarifying that there's no storage, outdoor storage of vehicles, boats, or trailers that would be permitted, that we direct the runoff back to Clark Street, that we receive a more detailed planning plan prior to issuance of a building permit, and that development and the use of the site would conform to the site plan approved by the Planning Commission. So we think the use and the design and the plan is compatible. We don't believe any type of screening fence is warranted. Back here, you could accomplish the 15-foot buffer here by sliding the building two feet to the north. You would still maintain the 10-foot usual building code separation from property line that is required. It just wouldn't be perfectly centered on the lot. And then we would need to address the need to keep this free of any green space or landscaping and the justification for providing it in the right-of-way instead. So with that, I'd be open to any questions we have about the surrounding area. Again, we have, I'm aware of facilities that are for RV storage that are on Armory Road and to the north of this property on Clark Street. And then we have Big Toy Storage, which is to the southeast here. And then this is Mr. Stein's mini storage complex that doesn't show up because the aerial photo is not recent enough. But this, this is the property we're talking about, right there. With that, I'd be open to any questions commissioners might have.
Can we change, or do we have the flexibility from moving it from a 70/30 to the 60/40 on the landscaping?
What we're pointing out is the 60/40 is required. The zoning administrator, myself, can approve deviations from the square footage and those requirements if there are hardships or reasons why the requirement can't be met on private property. But since you are the body that's actually reviewing and approving this site plan, you would have to hear from the applicant and what the justification would be for providing green space and landscaping within the right-of-way instead of where it would be required under the ordinance, which is right here. So what we're saying is, if you applied the landscape requirements, they'd have to have 1,220 square feet in front yard here. They have 916, and they can only pave 60% of their front yard area. And under this plan, they would be paving 70. And we're just pointing out that if you brought in some additional green space on the private property here, you would fix, you could potentially fix both of those by increasing the front yard landscaping to 1,200 square feet and reducing the paving ratio to 60%.
Okay. Any other questions of staff or here from applicant?
Just clarification, I want to make sure I'm clear. It's easy to see that paving is going to be in the front of the building. Will inside the building be paved as well?
I think that the building code would require it, but Mr. Ettinger and Mr. Stein could share that with us.
Okay, I just want to, I want to clarify that. And then the other question I have is in regard to drainage. It seems like sometimes in the City of Salina, we require a drainage study on a development like this, rather than just suggesting the street can be used, but apparently that's not the case here. There's no need to even consider onsite retention of water. Is that correct with this much additional paving?
The, that's a function of when property is platted, and basically, any subdivision that was platted before 1980 is exempt from the requirement of doing a drainage analysis. It's based on the plating. The other thing was that the, as the other development has occurred here, the storm sewers are actually fairly well-sized in this area, and the runoff goes up to South Street, and then in a fairly large storm sewer goes over to Dry Creek behind K-Mark. So the pattern is, it's collected in Clark, it goes up to South Street, and then over in a fairly good-sized system over to Dry Creek. So we think it's preferable to get the runoff to Clark Street and not have it trapped in behind along the river.
Yeah, I just think the point I wanted to make is that there's not a requirement for drainage because of the plating date.
There's not a requirement for them to do a drainage analysis. Because of the time that the holiday addition was platted, there was no requirement. So that is a function of plating.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll hear from the applicant. Reminder to state your name and address for the minutes, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Warren Ettinger. My business address is 631 South East Crawford, Suite 211. And I'm the architect for the project. I'll try and remember the questions that were asked, and then you can remind me of some of them. The building will be paved on the inside concrete. On the drawing, the site plan drawing, we're showing the area in the right-of-way as being, and requesting that to be included as part of the front yard landscaping requirement. And the primary reason for that is the maneuvering space that's required to get an RV unit into each of the units that's there. If we bring it in 12 feet, we've reduced that substantially into a line of an RV and be able to drive it into or back it into one of those units is going to be very difficult. It also means that we run the risk of somebody running over some of the landscaping, and that makes it difficult to maintain. And we felt like if we put it in the right-of-way, we're going to keep it out of the traffic zone. It's going to accomplish the same thing because it's the buffer between the street and the building and gets landscaped like the requirement calls for with sod and trees. The other thing that I'll point out, when we start counting the landscaped area, the definition in the ordinance talks about the front yard being defined as the front yard setback. And that's an imaginary line, if you will, that's shown by the right-side limit of those stippled spaces. In actuality, the landscaping continues all across the side, and so for the casual observer, you don't know where that front yard starts and stops. It's all in front of the building, and so it still, again, accomplishes that green space requirement. It just technically doesn't count under the ordinance. I think that we can agree to shifting the building off-center to gain the additional couple of feet on that south side. Our concern is that we've got to maintain at least 10 feet from the property line as a setback to avoid having to have a fire-rated wall as part of the construction. We don't have that requirement on the rear wall because the railroad right-of-way is considered a public way, and under the building code, that's then a set aside where we don't need to have that fire rating.
By my measurements, you had 13 feet on each side, so if you had 15 in south and 11 on the north, would that work?
That's within inches. The overall is 22.3, and we're 98, so we can, playing with those dimensions, we'll go to the 10-foot limit on the north.
And then have the other buffer on the south.
Yep. So our request would be to allow us to pave the areas we've shown and use that front right-of-way as, count that as part of the landscape requirement.
Any questions for applicant?
And just, just to explain that a little further, if this was outside the purview of the Planning Commission and Mr. Ettinger was meeting with Mr. Hers or myself, he would be trying to persuade us that the need to have the landscape on the right-of-way instead of in the front yard area was to allow for adequate maneuvering areas for RVs. And if we were, if we looked at the dimensions and all of that in terms of what was needed to get into those bays, then what we would do is make a written interpretation that the code allows us to make, that the landscaping otherwise required could be in the right-of-way instead of the front yard area based on the need to allow for adequate maneuvering area for RVs. So if you are persuaded that that is necessary by the dimensions that we've given you, again, that this is, this is a 50-foot area here, and your typical RVs can be up to 38 feet in length in terms of maneuvering them into these doors and maneuvering them out, then what you would do is, as you look to page eight there and the conditions, you would, you would delete the condition about revising the plan to provide the additional 304 square feet of front yard green space. And you would base that allowance of putting it in the right-of-way based on the need to have adequate maneuvering area for the RVs to get in and out of the facility. But again, the difference in this case is that Mr. Ettinger is trying to persuade you instead of city staff, but you would be sitting in our shoes and deciding whether you think that's a justification.
If we remove that 304 square feet, does that change any of the trees or shrubs that would need to be done?
No. It just means that what, the, the green space that would be formerly green space and would have plantings in them would be out here in the right-of-way instead of on this side here. And you would, you would just have more paving out there. You'd basically be pushing the green space to the east. But the reason we do that is that when I, as a zoning administrator, might grant relief from that in that case, then I would do that in writing. And what the justification was, one that comes to mind for me is that there's a petrolube, truck lube facility out on Monarch Road. And again, we were dealing with longer vehicles and things, and we gave them relief from the front yard landscaping requirement, allowed some to be placed in the right-of-way because they had a similar situation with truck lube bays and maneuvering, and it needed that area. But just saying that because you're granting a relief that's not generally available, that you would need to cite your reason for that. And if the reason is that pavement, it needs to be paved to allow for adequate vehicle maneuvering, that is a sufficient finding if you're persuaded by it.
Warren, excuse me, this question's for Dean, my apologies, I know you're there. But Dean, I, as you know, over my years here, I've been always concerned about the precedents we set with exceptions granted.
That's correct.
And, and is this setting an exception that then I, as the next person, can step up and say, you granted this exception on front yard landscaping there, I expect it to be granted here? You know, and I'm just, I'm just asking. How often have you granted exceptions as zoning administrator?
I can think of 10 to a dozen times. Some of them involving Mr. Ettinger, some of them involving other cases.
And I didn't cite those as a justification for this one.
That's exactly my point.
But the point I make is that when I do, when I do make an exception, I put the exception in writing, and I say, this exception is granted based on these circumstances. And as long as you do that, as long as you don't ignore the fact that it's not in the front yard, it's in the right-of-way, you're on solid ground, as long as you say our justification for not requiring it to be on the private side is because that area needs to be paved to allow for adequate RV maneuvering.
Thank you.
Any other questions for applicant? Thank you, Warren.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public would like to address the commission on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Well, we recently approved that quick shop out on West Crawford with, with some of the required landscaping in the, in the street right-of-way. It's the one that comes to mind to me, but this is a little different situation. It's a street that will probably never have enough building on it to ever have any demand to widen the pavement, so I don't see that there's any problem with, with using that right-of-way area as part of the required landscaping. I was going to raise the issue about, well, when we do the, when the side yards are included, they're still in front of the building, but I guess the rule really does say to the, to the theoretical building line, not the actual building line.
Well, we've had lots of discussions about that. We had discussion with it when we talked about storage buildings and about front yard and, you know, what if the building is set back farther. What you have to imagine is the purpose of the front yard landscaping requirements is to provide a visual buffer between the street and the commercial development. If you took that to its extreme and said, we're going to look at Sam's Club and Target, and they said, well, we, we just want to pave right to the edge of Marketplace, and we'll put some green space up next to our store that's 300 feet away from the street, I don't think that whatever might be put there 300 feet away from the street, it's true, it's between the building and the street, but it doesn't have, it doesn't meet the intent of, of why you're having front yard landscaping, which is to provide a visual buffer between the street and the commercial development. So you also have to look at the intent and whether putting it, in the case of quick shop, you could make the, the finding is that, well, they're still meeting the intent of the ordinance because they're, they're still having a buffer there, and you could conclude that putting it here instead of here still meets the intent because it's between the street and the building. But it's, it's the exception, not the rule.
About, about how many feet are between the front edge of the building on either the north or the south and the section that's highlighted as having landscaping?
This, the distance from here, this is the front property line. This is 50 feet. So what Mr. Ettinger has highlighted is, when we count front yard landscaping, we go back to the 25-foot line, and then while this is green space, we don't count this as front yard, but this is 50 feet here. So it's, it's, on this plan, it's 13 feet wide and 50, additional 25 feet deep.
Same thing.
And same thing here. So he, he did not shade this because he knew if he did, we wouldn't count it.
Right. But to me, that, that meets the intent of, of the landscaping though, really. I mean, if we're going on intent as opposed to the letter of the law, that appears to meet the intent. And it's, it's contiguous with what's already there, and it's much more likely to be maintained and look attractive.
Any other discussion? If not, chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion if, but I want to clarify that I'm getting this correct when I do.
Okay.
Before I make it, so we don't have to edit the motion here.
Okay.
We would eliminate Dean, if I'm correct in this motion. Staff recommendation number one.
Well, it would read, the applicant's site plan shall be revised to provide a 15-foot landscape buffer along the south property line, and the language about the 304 square feet of additional front yard green space would be scratched.
That's right. And then we would need to add an allowance to use the right-of-way for the front yard landscaping. Is that correct, green space?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be due to the need to provide adequate maneuvering area for the RVs.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve application CU thirteen dash three with the eight, with the seven listed staff recommendations, modifying recommendation number one to eliminate three hundred and four square feet of additional front yard green space along Clark Street and to add an item number eight, which makes allowances for the green space to be placed in the right-of-way due to the fact that the use of the facility requires the additional paving in the front yard for the vehicle turnaround.
Are you good with that? Motion stands? He's okay with that, the intent?
Okay.
Okay, looking for a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign of opposed? Motion passes.
That means that you would be able to submit a building permit plans just based on providing that fifteen-foot buffer on the south. But otherwise, the, the plans would be as submitted.
We'll move on to other matters?
As far as other matters, Mr. Kennedy has a meeting tomorrow afternoon at four. Um, there's a public hearing in this room to consider the proposed demolition of the, uh, former Saint John's Hospital over there on North Penn. And, uh, that, that would be Heritage Commission business this year. And then we will have a, uh, meeting on the seventeenth of December for Planning Commission with a very light agenda and an opportunity for you to, to quiz staff and say, what are you doing about this? Where are you on that? Any pet peeves that you have or, or things that you want us to be working on? So, um, give us your Christmas list. And, uh, then on the, uh, following Thursday, we will have a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. And, uh, Mr. Ryan is still your liaison for that, if I'm correct. And then, uh, just to explain, um, the city commission, the mayor appointed, um, Matt Wagner as an out-of-city representative, but he actually lives more than three miles from the city limits. So he wasn't, he's too far out and not eligible to serve, so we, we...
Didn't want to move just to be part of this group?
He didn't want to move closer to town just to be eligible. And so there, there was a misunderstanding at, at that. And, uh, I confirmed that he lives outside three miles from the city limits. So, um, there's a couple potential candidates to fill that spot and it may not occur till your meeting in January. But there, there is action to get that last spot filled. Um, so in terms of the remainder of the year, we have that. And then, um, after the first of the year, we have a, um, plan. The Montessori school is currently located in Christ Cathedral. They have been looking for alternative locations for a long time. They've looked at buying buildings, they've looked at adding on to buildings and the, they have submitted a conditional use permit application to construct a new Montessori preschool across from Oxbow Park at the corner of McAdams and Faith Drive. And that will be on your agenda for January. And we are working, um, on applications for, um, a conditional use permit to add dog boarding to Soggy Dog across the street. That may be coming in January. And then, uh, there was one other that we were working on, a conditional use permit, but I don't think it's been filed yet. So, um, you'll get a respite for the holidays, but we will pick up again in January. And, uh, I think that's all the business that we have for you. Um, other than we'll get that ninth spot filled and we'll, uh, I think what we understood and we will possibly share with you on the nineteenth is that, uh, we are working on some criteria or what I'm going to call a residential subdivision amenities checklist that we're going to suggest. And, uh, there was a lot of discussion by the city commission about, they'd be willing to grant special assessment financing for residential subdivisions if it, if they contained the amenities called for in the comprehensive plan. So we're going to develop that and we'll, uh, try to share it with you in a draft form to, to let you know what we're talking about. But some of the things deal with connectivity, um, how it addresses connections to trail systems, how it might tie in with the neighborhood park system or any lineal parks, that types of things. Um, but we will put that together and then propose that for use. And then what we would do is, um, if there was a special assessment request before the city commission, they would have in that packet a, uh, checklist done by the planning staff as to how that subdivision, um, matches up with that, that criteria. So, um, as far as I know, um, the special assessments is still available. It's just going to be looked at much more rigorously than maybe it has been in the past.
Wouldn't it be easier for them just to put down what they want? Then have us approve it and know what the staff would be? Wouldn't that save a lot of time than for you to write it, us to prove it, and then them to tell us what they really want?
Well, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be based on what's in the comprehensive plan and not individual personal preference. So we're, we're going to start with that and ask the city commission to adopt it as part of their criteria. But we would like to share it with you because it's, it's, it's not largely understood, but it is the planning commission and not the city commission that approves subdivision plats. And, and that's the way it's set up in state law. The planning commission has the final authority on whether to approve or disapprove a plat. And all the city commission's doing is deciding whether they want to accept the dedications that come along with that plat. So it's, it's important, um, and not widely understood. That, that's why it's important for you to be involved in that, at least seeing that and being aware of it because as staff members, we're supposed to share that with you anyway when you're reviewing a plat. So we don't think it's anything new or different, but it, it should be committed to writing so that there's some sort of checklist and then there's a consistent checklist every time a special assessment request comes forward instead of having the ground move that this, these are the criteria, these are the agreed-upon criteria, and the subdivision needs it or it doesn't need it. So that's, that's what we're going to work towards. But it, it would not be a fairly and equitably administered policy if, if the target moved all the time. So staff is going to try to develop a fixed target.
Okay.
Todd, I have, I, you know, I represent this committee on the Heritage Commission. I appreciate doing that, I really enjoy that frankly. But there's a, there is a fairly significant issue and I hope you're aware of it, and that is the demolition or raising of Penn Campus, uh, the former hospital. And, and since it is in the Heritage Commission's purview right now, uh, we have to make a decision whether to endorse that, is the way I understand it. I would, if any of you have any feeling about that, I would certainly entertain your thoughts on that. I'm, I'm going to share with you that I, I, right now, we have a public hearing coming up and I, um, tend to support it, but I, I, you know, I certainly would want to represent this commission as well.
My understanding is the only thing that's in the Heritage Commission though is the, the original chapel, is that correct?
No.
It is not the whole building itself?
The actual designation is, the property address is one thirty-nine North Penn. The focus on, is on the original nineteen fourteen building, not just the chapel, but the original four-story hospital building.
As well as the additions that have been added on to it.
But the, because of the way the additions were done, they're a pretty integral part of the building. You can't just kind of peel them off and leave the original behind, so.
Dean, correct me, correct me, but I believe there's just one building that will be remaining once the project is done and that would be the building that lies, it's a self-standing building that would be on kind of the northwest corner of the site.
They do plan, they do plan to tear it, they plan to tear it down as well. It's just, it is not part of the protected hospital.
So the whole block, basically.
Yes. And we'll explain that, but there are four or five structures on the south side of Johnstown Avenue that they're also proposing to demolish. But the focus of the Heritage Commission is just on the one protected structure, which is the main hospital building.
The main building, but that is fairly significant.
The other, the other buildings are not part of the hearing.
Well, my take on it is I, I think that, um, the people who are in control of it now, being, it's not a regional health center, probably have the wherewithal to, if it does need to be raised, can do it properly. My concern from a community, even though I live in the county, from a city standpoint, um, I think that if it were ever sold, i.e. for a dollar or something like that, and then it was fallen to the hands of somebody who couldn't maintain it, it may end up back into the city's hands and be raised and, and that. So that, that would be my concern. I've heard numbers anywhere from, from four million to, to, to even bring it up to ADA standards for anybody to a million dollars a year just to maintain it with insurance, structural stuff, heat and air, things like that. So, uh, I think given the time that's here, it could be an asset, it could be the thing looking for, um, the redevelopment for north. Um, that could be a start for something there, especially with the veneer center being across the street, which I think is a great asset for that area.
Any others? So if you're interested in following that case, that will be tomorrow at four o'clock in the same room. Mr. Kennedy will be back.
And I, and I, I do share your, Todd, that oftentimes facilities that are, that are older and, and are very, very expensive to modernize or to bring in the standards, that if they fall into the wrong hands, they become an eyesore for a community awfully quickly.
Yep.
So, okay. I'll try to represent us then.
Perfect. Any other discussions will be adjourned?
Yeah, just bring your Christmas list with you on the seventeenth. We'll try to keep it light, if you will.
Seventeenth, yeah. We need our Christmas list meeting, we can talk about, um...
If you have pet peeves or how come you haven't done something about this? Or I drive by this property all the...
Bonuses, Christmas bonuses.
I drive by this property all the time and it annoys me that you're not doing anything about it, that, that type of thing.
Or we could even revisit just briefly entryways into the community.
As long as you're brief.
Because I only, I only have two more years to get something done on that.
Okay, well, I'm going to give you a Merry Christmas because I'm going to be in Colorado. But maybe I'll send you a card before I go.
You said, you sent us a card with your list. We'll read it to everybody.
Wish you were here. This, uh, meeting is adjourned before we get out of here.